Item three, approval of listed appropriations to cover directed positions additional, additions at mid-year 2017.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Board Members, Ms. Superintendent. This next item, of course, has been some discussion about. What it is, is a request relative to mid-year to request additional appropriation authority for the positions listed at the bottom and on the second page of this agenda item for positions that were moved forward upon, and some of them have been filled. And you can see on the second page, the fill dates, the remainder, the salary amounts we need is $302,426 for the remainder of FY17. And then, the total amount on an annual basis going forward would be $471,26,000 if all the positions are filled throughout FY18. It's an item that, you know, has been discussed, and we would welcome any questions you might have in relation to that. Mr. Everett Patrick is also very familiar with it.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Dr. Marley?
Yes, and Dr. Green, you probably can answer this. And I know we've had some communications back and forth, and I, by the time I got back and read through some of it, I still have some questions. A concern in looking at the Director of Strategic Communications, the amount of the salary, and not only the amount of the salary, but I'm noticing that the annual salary is $120, and then there is a, the salary amount that is actually looked at, it still is $96,000. But then I'm looking also at the workers' comp person, and looking at the criteria and the, as well as the educational levels that are there. Who actually sets the salaries? Who determines what the salary amounts would be based on positions? And as I've gone through all of the job requirements, looking at the years of service, looking at the education, and there seems to be a disproportion with that Director of Strategic Communications. And when we look at the person who is in the position of the workers' comp, who has to have a law degree, and even though there's a master's required there for that director, it seems as if that salary is a little high. So, who actually determines how much the salary would be? How do we determine that? And then, I'll go to the next question about that, because when we're looking at communications, and we've talked about that, and I know that there are going to be some other things looking at that area of communications, but it just seems to be a lot of positions being added in that particular department. And I'm wondering about the necessity of some of these as we go about. So, I guess the first thing is, who decides? How do we decide what a salary would be for a particular position? And looking at the educational level, the background, the experience, all sorts of things like that, and just looking at that particular one, it just seems to be, as I went through all the paperwork, and thank you so much for sending me the information that I received, it just seems to be totally out of proportion with everything else that I was looking at, and some of the other salaries that were there.
The salary range is determined, there's, at a director's level, there's a range that we have that's in Human Capital Management, and we determine based on the individual and what they bring to the table as far as background and experience, and work within that range, and this is, this is within that range for the Director of Strategic Communications. And then, for the workman's comp salary, you know, it's within the range of director, but I can defer to, in this case, Ms. Hakemeyer, to talk about the means by which we came to that salary, and what was being considered.
Yes, sir. Thank you. There was an increase in job responsibilities. Previously, there had not been a director in that area, even though that person supervises five employees and four contractors, and is responsible for a very, very large budget. And we added the insurance requirements to that job description. And as you may know, we are going out on RFP now for a new insurance broker. We've looked at updating some of our existing insurance policies to try and get some better deals, if you will, for the district. And all of that is a result of that person taking on those additional responsibilities and doing quite a good job. Very knowledgeable and experienced, particularly in the area of workers' comp, and a variety of achievements that...
Can I stop you?
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't mind, yes. I wasn't questioning the amount. I have no problem with it.
How do we get there? Is that what you want to run?
How you get there, but also, I guess it concerns me, because I'm looking at the Director of Strategic Communications and looking at the background and the education, and it doesn't compel, it doesn't compel in the education that's for that position of the workers' comp. And also, looking at the fact that, I'm not questioning that amount. I have no problem. I want to make it known for the record, with people being paid great salaries, because I want to be paid a great one too, for the work I do and the education I bring. But then, when I look at, I guess that Director of Strategic Communications sort of sticks out, and then when we begin to look at all else that's in that department, as far as salaries are concerned, it concerns me. And then, looking at that, comparing to what the person who is in the workers' comp position is bringing forth, it concerns me. There seems to be an imbalance. The other thing is a concern, is where does the human capital, human resources fit in all of this, in helping to determine some of these salaries? Does it, it seems to me as if different departments determine a range of what they want to bring people in. Do we have some consistency, some continuity, based on a scale? And so, and I'm gonna go a little further. If we're gonna be able to do that, and I've been asking for it, and Dr. Green, again, I thank you for the information you sent me, but I still have not gotten to where we need to get to. We still have counselors, we still have social workers, we still have psychologists that had to come in with a master's degree. And these people came in and gave up monies, monies was taken away from them under the former administration before Ms. Thurmond. These people were paid at a differential scale, because they have to come in with the masters. They're still being paid on a teacher's salary scale. There has been no investigation, there has been no subjugation, there has been nothing to be able to say, here's what, and that's been my question, what do we need to do? What would it take to get these people? So, when I see someone coming in, and they can get a job as a Strategic Director of Communications with a bachelor's degree, and you're asking all these other people to have a master's degree, and they are front line, working with our children and doing the things, I'm not asking to go back and take, and try to make up for what was lost. I'm just asking for equitable distribution and for pay equity be there. And as, again, as I said, I'm not questioning the amount, but the workers' comp salary stood out. This person has a law degree and all of that, and then I see someone in that $120,000 position with a bachelor's degree, and it just concerns me.
Mr. Everett, you are...
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Dr. Marley. The salary schedule does lie within Human Capital Management, and actually brought with me today, Ms. Nicole Burkett. She's the individual that calculates the salary. So, what we do is, we take the director's pay scale, and we look at the work experience for that individual, and we calculate it based on that specifically. So, we're not only looking at the educational level, but we're looking at the number of experiences, and we also ask that individual verify that experience by sending out paperwork to their former employers. We receive that, and then we calculate the salary based on that estimation.
And I don't have a problem, I know you're trying to get him, Ms. Turner. I don't have a problem with that, but when a position calls for a master's degree, so are we gonna say, because I didn't see where it says, we will equate a certain amount of education for that, substitute for that. Again, I think that we've got to get somewhere that we're in line. Again, this is education. I think we're the most underpaid, the underrepresented, and less thankful people that, you know, we don't get the thanks. But at the same time, my concern is, if we're gonna hit here, I want to hit here, I want to hit there. We still have to look at the maintenance people. And I just think, Dr. Green, that somehow along, I know, you know, we came in, and there was a lot that was done before we got here. And again, I go back to the justice, long delayed is justice denied. When do we begin to look at, I guess, you know, I've been saying this ever since I've been on the board, and it just seems as if nothing has taken place. So, you know, I have to defer to you, because, you know, we're here at this point. And I've gotten the information, and when I've gone through the information, as I said to you, I go deep. I'm not getting paid all the money to go deep, but I do, and I'm gonna ask questions. I just don't, I don't see it. I just would like to see those groups brought in line with where they should be. I'm not asking to go back. If we had a lot of money, I would say we need to go back and give them back, but that's not real. But I'd like to get a point of where we start, to bring them up to where they need to be. A 1.5% does not actually take place, take the place of what was taken away. When you keep taking things from people, and you're not giving them back, you're not showing them their value, their worth, and you go to school, you know, I said this morning when I was being sworn in, I'm not gonna keep telling people that education makes a difference. Because you know what? I'm still fighting with mine. It does give you a foot in the door, because we look at people, but we cannot let things be subjective, we've got to let them be objective. And I just would like to see these people that, to me, Dr. Green, were made promises, and this stuff was taken away, that we at least look at, what would it take to get them in line? Let's look at the maintenance people, what would it take to get those positions where they need to be? Look at the council social workers. And then, look at a person coming in at that level, then you begin to question, hey, then why am I going to school? Why am I getting all this? Even if I have 10, 15 years of experience, and a person can come in at that salary and not have to have the master's degree. I just think that we need to either do it right, or not do it at all. And I know, it seems like, yeah, we talk about it all the time, but I'm gonna keep talking about it until we look at it, because it's dear to my heart. I just believe in treating people as if they're human, but also valuing them, Dr. Green, as you said, for the work they do. If we're gonna compensate, we need to compensate all around, and not just at some positions. And that position just really concerns me, and the amount of salary for that Strategic Director of Communication position. And then, how it fits in with everything else that we have in that department also concerns me. So, I really would like to, and I'd like to see the whole thing be ordered, I'd like to see everything come together, and we look at the necessity, that we don't just put something there for the sake of putting it there, put a person there for the sake of putting them there. What's the necessity of it? Because if you're gonna do it at the top, then I want to see that every child down there, there's a reason and a rationale for it taking place, then the education of the children is gonna be based on what we're spending at the top.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Turner, followed by Dr. Irwin, and then, Mr. Jester.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I just, a couple things, Dr. Green. I wanted to know, I was looking around for Ms. Stewart, because just as we got a clearer explanation from Mrs. Hakemeyer, I think that it would be incumbent upon us to have the chief here for Communications, because that's where the justification, and it brings more clarity and understanding on why this position was set at the salary it was. The other thing is, I too, just looking at the requirements, I was wondering, Mr. Patrick, and I'm not sure if this is your question, how that salary, does a department head come and tell you, this is the salary, I want to bring someone in? Or is there already a structure in place where, and if it is a structure, I'm looking at, that structure would be based on experience, I'm thinking, and educational requirements? So, I'm looking at educational being a bachelor degree at this kind of salary, and just as was brought up with a law degree, it seems like there's just some kind of disparity there. So, I wondered if in Human Capital, if the chief comes to you and said, this is the position that has been approved, and I want to bring this person in for this salary, is that how it's done?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Turner. Good afternoon. We have the structure in place. We're not taking our direction from the chiefs. The salaries, the structure for that salary would be based on the title. So, if it's a director, we already have a structure in place for that. And now, to go into further depth, I can get Ms. Burkett to now weigh in on that. She actually would have done both of those salaries, so if it's okay, I'd like to get her to weigh in on that, if that's okay with you, Dr. Green.
Okay.
Ms. Burkett?
Good afternoon, everyone. Salary placement is based off of education and experience, and as Mr. Patrick has already stated, you have certain guidelines, depending on the type of position. So, you have administrative guidelines, you have classified guidelines, and you have certified guidelines. The certified guidelines are established by the state, and then the other two are established by the district.
Okay, I'm aware of classifications versus certification. I think I, we've talked about that a couple of times. But who sets the salary structure? Is that done in HCM, or is that set forth by the department requesting?
This structure is set by HCM, and it's been established for a while. It was restructured in 2012, and we do take direction from administration.
Just to be clear, if someone was coming in, and I understand this position did not exist before in our system, so if someone came in on that level, because we're just looking at a level, at a director's level, they would all be brought in at that salary of $120,000?
No.
That is not, okay, so what is that based on?
It's a range.
Is it steps in between?
Right, and it's based on administrative experience, and we adhere to the salary placement guidelines that, for new hires, if they're new. And if they're promoted, it's by promotion.
Okay. I'll accept that for now. Thank you.
Dr. Irwin, followed by Mr. Jester.
Mr. Parker, good afternoon. Couple of quick questions for you. Let's just take the Director of Strategic Communications. What was that salary range?
I'm gonna have to defer to Ms. Burkett on that, if she brought that salary range with her. If she does not have it today, we can't get that information to you.
Okay. She's grabbing it?
I have the range, starting at $93,626 to $122,852.
My second question is, once a person is hired, let's say this Director of Strategic Communications is hired at $120,000, at any point, does HCM adjust that salary beyond the range?
No, sir. We would not adjust beyond the range. To adjust the salary beyond the range, we'd have to go to the superintendent for that direction.
Okay.
But HCM alone would not adjust the range beyond the cap to the salary.
Okay. I understand that. But let's say such a thing did occur, how would it be accounted for?
I would have to actually research that for you, Dr. Irwin. I'm not sure at this point if we're, they're going over the salary range that we have allotted in Human Capital Management, but I can get that answer to you.
Okay. Thank you.
And I can also find that that's been done before in the past.
All right. Mr. Jester?
All right. Dr. Green, so this is an increase in the budget of a few hundred thousand dollars. $471, is that what that says? Annualized.
Correct. Annualized, yeah. 302, semi-annually.
So, I just wanted to kind of get a feel for what you're thinking about the return on investment, the ROI on this. And ultimately, our goal is academic achievement, right? And you're saying that right now, you feel the best way to spend the next $500,000 is on these positions, as opposed to the teachers and counselors and the schoolhouse employees? Is that what you're saying?
Well, actually, it's a both and. We, I think we've already taken significant steps and are taking them even today toward the schoolhouse, and the teachers, and counselors, and custodians, and those who have immediate contact with our children. The other part of that is getting the message out about the great work that they're doing. So, there's a role that communications plays in getting that message out into different stakeholders throughout, and I think the two go hand in hand.
Gotcha. I'm not a big fan of just, you know, the role of, you know, getting the message out and letting them know, and kind of tooting their own horn. I would rather just, you know, academic achievement. But if you feel this is the best way to achieve the academic achievement, I'm fine with that. I'm also concerned that we seem to keep increasing the budget. You know, we have the second highest milled rate in the state, and if we keep increasing the budget, then when things start going south and revenue dips, we don't give ourselves a lot of flexibility, and we would have to start laying people off. What are your thoughts about our flexibility?
Well, I'm cognizant of what's taken place in the past, and I believe for the last two years, we've rolled the milled rate back, and I think that we will have that discussion again, hopefully. We did last year, I think it was a point, was it point three?
Point three, point thirty-eight.
What did we roll back this past?
Point three-five.
Point three-five. And I'm optimistic that if we continue to be as fiscally prudent as we are now, that we'll be able to have that conversation again. So, we've been, not at large leaps, but I think we've been rolling it back with the consideration of what our taxpayers and stakeholders have invested in us and allowed us to do.
So, our trajectory would be towards giving us more flexibility for whatever happens?
Correct.
All right. And is Ms. Tyson, oh, man, Ms. Tyson left. Maybe somebody else can tell us. We had talked about a board policy before, and having some sort of analysis, I think we had recently discussed this. When are we up for another analysis on salaries, employees, and stuff?
I think we're due next year. I think, every five years, I think, when we ever in the...
And this is by board policy?
Right, yes. Right, that's by board policy, and I think next year, we're up for it.
So, 2018, we can start seeing the motions for this analysis that Dr. Marley was kind of talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
The same thing Dr. Marley was talking about, looking at those steps, and the equitable fairness of those steps, et cetera. That's when we're looking at that.
Thanks, sir.
Dr. Johnson, just one last thing, please. And looking at those, the council, social workers, and psychologists are not basically steps, they're scales. These are things as a differential, and it shouldn't take five years, because it's already been four years, and you know, almost five years since that's taken place. So, it shouldn't take five years with that. And I think the same way that we're making decisions about some of these salaries, then we should be able to make the decision, administrative decision, to do the research to see what it would take in order to bring that back in line. As I said, I've been on the board since 2013, and it hasn't happened yet. I want to go back to that Strategic Communications position. It's the fact that, my thing is, if the person is not where they need to be, then maybe you don't need to call them director. But I also saw some other intricate ties in there with that position, and the person who's in it, and that concerns me too. And so, we have a salary range started at $93,600 and something, up to $122,000, and that person comes in at the very top, that concerns me also. So, we have to begin to look at, and I see the ties and the connections, and we've got to be realistic. As I said, and this board has an obligation to make sure, and as Ms. Jester was saying, how are we spending the money? How are we putting it? Education, academic first. I do want to see the Communications Department get to where it needs to be, because I'm really on that. And I can't stand to see something just halfway done, and mediocrity does not fit in my book. But at the same time, just padding and putting in positions that might not, and I hate that Ms. Houston Stewart is not here either, to, oh, she's here, okay, to ask those questions, you know, where's this all coming from? And I, you know, see us, we're supposed to be flattening, but I see it widening. We just keep widening and adding on all these positions, and all this money, and all these things like that. And as I said, I have no problem with great salaries, because I want to be paid a great salary too, but I want to make sure that there's a balance and there's equity as from one to the other. And I think at some point, Dr. Green, we're gonna have to look at, how do we actually come to grips with it in terms with putting people where they need to be, and them getting to the next level based on some benchmarks and some proven levels of achievement, before we start paying out monies like that? And Ms. Houston Stewart, you know, saying to Dr. Green, the concern, and it's the how do we arrive at the salary and to bring someone in at that level? And I looked at the educational background, look at what they came from, I looked at the connections and the ties. It concerns me. And especially when we look at other places, and I look at other people who are not, who've been here forever and a day. And so, not only am I looking at it, these people are also looking at it. If I was in the household, and my mother, my dad, there were 14 of us, I'm number 14, if they fed everybody else and gave them more, and when they will, they gave them more in the will than they gave me, I'd feel as if I didn't belong. And so, I don't want to see our employees feeling as if that they don't belong. Because after a while, what you're gonna have is a bad attitude, and the morale, and people are not gonna perform. When people have low morals, they just don't perform. And so, when we have these kind of things that stick out like a sore thumb, we have got to begin to address it. Yes, we need great communication, we need to have it. I think we were doing great all along, we needed to get, we go from good to better, to better, to best. But at the same time, we don't have to do it on the backs and the shoulders of other people. How do we do it so that it is done in the spirit of what we're trying to do as an educational institution? We're nonprofit. We're not making profits here. And so, I want to make sure that we look at that, Dr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Marley. Last, last...
Because I mean short, right? Mr. Orson.
I just want to observe, I mean, I think we've had a number of different issues that are before us, you know, some are specific to this agenda item, which we have to make a decision on. Some are specific to broader policy implications that we already have in place, which are our broad salary scales, in line with the marketplace, in line with what we should be paying people. We have a process set up for reviewing that. It sounds like that will soon be coming online, and we need to keep in mind sort of what we're trying to accomplish through that, which is both to have competitive salaries for people who are supporting schoolhouse, as well as obviously investing as much money as possible in the schoolhouse, which I think is the universal belief of this board. But we also have to figure out, as we're going through that process, what, we've had this discussion, what this organization needs to look like. And you haven't been here that long, and you were trying to undo and cover for a lot of stuff that was done before any of us were on this board. A lot of changes, the elimination of the salary differentials that Dr. Marley has pointed out, there are a lot of things that were done before, so I think we're slowly bringing back into place. But as we do that, as we fix those things, I think it's also a great opportunity for us to make sure that the past practices were also the right practices, right? Rather than just, I think the salary differentials, those make a lot of sense. I understand, my mother was a psychologist, she would have told me to say that anyway. But I do believe that those things are important, but there's also a great opportunity for us to fashion the organization in a way that we think will be most effective, most efficient of supporting where our primary mission is executed, which is in the schoolhouse. And I think we just have to stay mindful of that, not only on an individual agenda item, but really on the broader picture of what we're doing over the next year or two years.
Since my colleague, my vice chair, this is the last...
The last one, it's the last one. So, and listen to all my board members speak, Dr. Marley, Mr. Orson, Jester, Ms. Turner, it really sounds like, in order to get at it, because we'll go back and forth about this for another month, another month, another month, why is there just not auditing of the hiring process and human resources and salary ranges?
We can ask for that.
Because then, we don't have to talk about it anymore. Once it's on paper, we see it, we can see whether it's right or wrong, and does it really equate to salary equity?
I've asked for that.
Well, I'm asking with you.
Yeah. So, you're backing me in asking for it, because I think that auditing of that, but not only of the Communications Department, I'd like to see an updated audit on human capital also. Because, you know, it's almost like the horse, the cart comes for the horse, you know, changes are made, and then an audit. I'd like to see the audit, then the changes made based on the audit and the results of the audit, because that's what the telltale signs are. And so, we have to also begin to look at how the audit is done, who does the audit, when the audit is done, and those things that come out of it. So, I'd like to be able to see that. So, thank you, Dr. Irwin, for moving in that direction.
Well, and to your point, Dr. Marley, we've just concluded the audit, the procedure practice audit of Human Capital done by KPMG. We're turning the corner right now as we speak, and we're gonna do a culture, climate audit, and we can do the same for Communications external as well, and we will commit to doing that.
So, are these external audits that are being done, or internal?
As I said, external.
Okay, because I'd like to see that. I think that, I like the objectivity, and then that gives us an opportunity to set benchmarks. As Mr. Orson was saying, what's the direction? What do we want this organization to look like? What do we want it to say? And when we're talking about educating children and getting to where we need to get to, so I think that audits would be great, but then, the changes have to come out of the audit, not the audit come out of the change.
Dr. Johnson.
With the...
I'm sorry. Be quick. I just wanted to say that, I think that since Ms. Houston Stewart was able to join us, I would think that she came in because we had some questions, and that's why we sent for her, right, Ms. Dr. Green? I'm thinking.
There was a question.
It was a question. I had a question, I think, Dr. Marley. And Ms. Houston Stewart, the question was... And Ms. Houston Stewart, the question was the salary that was assigned to the director of strategic, is it communications, being at 120? And I think the cap, Ms. Burkett, if that's her name, I hope I got it right, said that the cap was at 120, the range was 96 to 122. And so this position was assigned at 120 based on a bachelor's degree and some work experience. And the question was, we talked to Ms. Hackamire about how the salary was set for her director, which required a law degree, coming in at 101. So we wanted to bring you in, at least to get some clarity and some understanding about that salary.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, Dr. Green, and to the board chair and vice chair. The director of communications marketing, as you said, is a new position. As you know, the department had three total, or four total individuals in the department a year ago. Part of the reorganization of the communications department is looking at strategically what is needed in the department to fulfill the district strategic plan. Goal four is of the district strategic plan is communications, both internal and external. As you know, an audit was done of the communications department that clearly outlined that for a district this size, there were not enough people in the department to carry on the work that definitely felt like is needed for a school district this size, as well as what the board's expectations were, the superintendent's expectations, and greater still, the expectations of what we have heard from the community of parents and stakeholders, taxpayers in the community. So looking at the structure of the department, looking specifically at an internal and external piece, the way that communications is now structured and organized, this position was added because marketing is a critical piece of what school districts today have to do to be competitive. No longer are we the only game in town, and so 10 years ago, we, school districts didn't even think about marketing themselves. Today, it's critical that you do. So this position was added, looking at the education and experience of the individual, as Ms. Burkett said. This person serves, along with the director of media and news, serves as a backup to me in the organization when I'm not here on vacation or whatever. So this person serves as a backup to the chief. Currently, this person supervises three individuals in the department, so they do have supervisory overview of that. Also, this person came in, if we're talking specifically about the person in the position, came to us from Dallas, Texas, which is a much bigger district than DeKalb. And so looking at that person's experience there and the salary that they were earning there, coming to here, the position, as you said, you looked at the range, and so it was determined that 120 would be in line with what the other director in the department was earning. And with, and so that's where the information was submitted to HR to look at that as possibility for that position.
Thank you for that information. Just, now you said that there was another director in the department, and this was a comparable salary to what that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and so they have comparable experiences, and they have comparable educational attainment as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure we're just not just, just setting, because I'm thinking that you would have set the salary, and then you would have went out and looked for what you want.
Absolutely.
And not find the person and then adjudicate a salary to them, right?
Absolutely, that's absolutely right. That's why there's a range there, and we looked within that, in that range, and looked at the experience and what that person brings to the table, and also, like I said, serving us backup to the chief, me, and the department.
Now, that audit you're speaking of, is that the audit that you did?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms.
Yep, so that, that's, that's another question and concern, that you did the audit, and then the changes were made, but also you said that this person came by way of Dallas, Texas, and had a larger district. But also, he came by way of Kansas City, where you were.
Absolutely.
Right, and so, yep, I hear, I hear a tinge of attitude there. Please, please don't, don't do that.
I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, I do.
May I interrupt just very quickly? I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you want to talk about a specific individual, please know that you can have this discussion executive session as a personnel item because it is a particular individual.
Surely, but I, I brought it up because she brought it up. The thing about it is, I just want to make sure that we're fair, and looking at the people that were already in this department, how much of an opportunity that these same people have? Did we have to call it a director position? Even just take the person out, did we have to call it a director position? Could it have had another name? That's all I want us to be.
Dr. Morley.
I, I want us to be able to, hold on, Dr., I'm gonna finish with this. It's to just say, looking at the positions, did it have to be a director? Could it have been something else? Could we have spent less money, no matter who was? And then looking at the department as a whole. And I do believe in expanding the department and having the best department, but I just want to make sure things are, and I know nothing in life is fair, but we don't have to play unfair because life is not fair.
Is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda for this evening?[1791.51]